We're live.
Okay. So, let's start by taking attendance. First of all, this is zoning board's adjustment of the town of Webster and it is April 11th, 2023. And I have the secretary start by taking attendance.
Murray Bender.
Present.
Robert Drouin.
Present.
Barbara Corliss here. Jay Boe absent. Dee Blake.
Here.
Guy LaRochelle.
Here.
Susan Roberts. That's it?
Not here. Okay. So, are there, do we have any minutes that we still have to do?
There are in the back. We have two sets of minutes.
Okay. Well, we'll do that after. Yeah. Okay. So, first of all, I would, I would like to do this in a different order. Because I'd like to do the one that would be relatively quick and that would be Joel Amber Fornier. So, yeah, just, okay. Now, even if you know what we do, I'll tell you anyway. So, we will start by having you tell us exactly what it is that you want to do. You know, basically you go through this, you know, what you already wrote. And after you have finished, we will hear from anybody else who wishes to speak in your favor. Then there will be a chance for anybody who is opposed to it to be heard. After that, a chance for rebuttal and rebuttal by the opponent. Then we close the hearing. We open it up to discussion by the board. And by the way, the board will interrupt you at any point, you know. And so, anyway, usually we will make our decision tonight. If, well, if for you and for the opponent, if you're unhappy with our decision, you can ask for a rehearing within 30 days. You've got to file it within 30 days. And then it goes before, and so if we, if we hold on to what we said, then you have 30 days in which to file an appeal to this event. So, why don't you go ahead and tell us exactly what it is you wanted to do?
So, my wife and I, we moved here summer of 2020, bought a house. It was a, a little bit of a flip over on Lake Road and bought it, bought it in the hot market of 2020. And it's, it's a smaller house and with it being smaller, we're having space we were hoping to add on someday. And obviously, through further research, after being first time home buyers, we didn't realize the shape of the lot is very narrow where our house is.
How much, how much land is it?
So, we have six and a half, so just under six and a half acres. But where our house lies, it's right around 75 feet. If you get to the back of our lot, about 200 yards behind it where our house is, it's 245 feet. So, wide. So, there's plenty of room if the house was, the house was originally built in 1970.
Prior to zoning.
Prior to zoning.
Who was the prior owner?
I'm not 100% sure. It was two owners before myself. It was someone from Massachusetts. It was a camp that was never finished for a while.
I'm just trying to picture just exactly where it is.
So, if you're going down Lake Road, it's the third driveway on the left right before Ralph Road.
Yep.
It's the last, it's the last one right there. And of course, if you look at the lots, I have a good blow up from this, but if there's a, there's like 1.2 acres right next to us, which is the, my butter that I'm closest to, that would square off that lot, which would make it not having that. But it was just obviously pre-zoning. So, it's very narrow where it was. I think the guy just kind of maybe had plans to go further. And it's pretty rocky and hilly like most of Webster is. But, yeah, so where, where my house sits currently, I realized I have two different measurements because when I first did it, I just assumed that it was parallel to the property line. And then after further review, it is actually angled towards or away, whatever way you want to look at it. So, the 50 to 1 map, the, the smaller diagram where it's 26 feet in the far right corner from the property line, it kind of angles away. So, the, the red in there is where the, hopefully the addition would be. And it'd be in the driveway, not, not encroaching further to where the closest part of the house is to another property. Obviously going towards the opposite end. We're hoping to have a family and make more room. We can't go up because the flippers bolted the ceilings, which is very nice. But obviously that was the biggest appeal for my wife with the house was the bolted ceiling. So, without having to rip apart the entire roof and redesigning the entire home and going up, we'd be going out. And if we were going any other direction, obviously I'm already within 26 feet of one property line. Didn't want to cut, our propane tanks are on that side of the house as well. But the septic's on the back, the well is on the other side. So, digging up our driveway would be the easiest area and we'd still be, I believe it's 200 feet from the road? Or is that what it is? Setback from the road to the building?
100 feet from the road.
Okay. We're still not even, we're still 200.
285, 3.
Yeah. Well, 203, that was from the corner. That was a close, I didn't know what you guys exactly wanted. It's, it's 285 if you were to run down the driveway because it's a curve. If I went from my post, which is the closest to the house, straight through the woods, it'd be still 200, over 200 feet. I don't even think the house was ever completed. So, I don't think anyone, if you're trying to.
I'm just trying to think who built that house and, and I know who built it.
Shuck, shuck.
Uh, that does sound familiar, actually.
Shuck.
And then they, then I believe they get a divorce.
Excuse me, but didn't you say it was empty for many years?
Yeah, it was abandoned. They never finished it.
Can I get your name?
John Fornier.
Yeah, it was never, it was never occupied from what my.
I didn't catch your question.
John Fornier.
No, no, no. What was your question?
It was never occupied.
I was just stating that he had told me that the building was vacant for many years.
Also, no one ever lived there. It wasn't a mailbox. We were the first actually residents, I believe, ever.
So, it was just a camp?
It was unfinished camp. I think it was gonna be hunting maybe vacant. Because it's not on the lake. You can't, you can only see glimmers of the lake when there's no leaves. So, it was not, it's not a lake house.
I didn't realize that there was two driveways up in there. I thought it was one. Two driveways to this property? The, the, no, but there's, as you go down past my GPS. Yeah. On the opposite side of the road from her, there's a driveway up in there. And then evidently it's his driveway. And I didn't realize there was two driveways up in there. I only knew of one.
I can only imagine what it looked like prior to the, the realtors that bought it and flipped it. But there's nothing you can really do as far as landscape wise. So, you probably, I mean, you can barely see our house right now through the woods.
So, you're saying nobody, nobody was living in this house before you?
Yeah. And then it was actually my sister-in-law and her sister, April Dunn, had bought it and.
Realtor. Realtor, April Dunn, the realtor.
Yeah. So, yeah, her sisters, my sister-in-law, so.
Is there a foundation under this camp right now?
Uh, well, it's a house, yeah. It's a, it's a full eight-foot porch foundation. Yeah.
You plan on putting a foundation under this new section?
I'm gonna probably just do, I'm just gonna do frost walls. Just everything's so expensive. It's kind of, we're trying to grow a family without breaking the bank doing it and.
Now, now you have, the driveway comes out and it extends out into a kind of a big bubble.
Yep.
Is that all open driveway now?
Yeah, yeah. So, when you get to.
So, you really only have a little, what, five, 10 feet of grass or trees before you get to the property line? I'm asking, what do you have for brush or trees or?
It's basically just overgrown sap. Like, no one had been there for, I can't, I, I don't know. It looked like six years ago.
Either side of your parking lot, either side of your driveway.
So, right where that edge is, it's about, it's a drop-off. So, if you go down Lake Road, each of the properties kind of plateaus down. So, right as that, like where that edge of the driveway is, it drops off down. My drainage from my foundation shoots out there and drops off. So, it's set, and then as it gets towards like where my, the actual existing home is, it kind of flattens out there, but it gnolls over beyond towards their property line. So.
So, there's really no landscaping or trees or brush at the edge of the property line or is there?
There's, there's sap, there's overgrown, there's probably four-inch birch trees or whatever random trees have grown over the years. But there, no, there's, it's gravel and brush up to the property.
Where's the nearest property from your house, from your house that's there now?
Lux.
House, building.
That, the Luxes on the opposite side.
How far are they from you?
Their property line is.
Their, their house?
Their house, couple hundred yards. I mean, it's, it's a, you can barely, like, we can see their house now, but.
Is it theoretically right in the, now on the next lot?
I'm sorry?
Their house, is it right on the next lot?
Yes, they're the driveway before mine. So, that 1,500-foot property line, they're on that side of it.
And between your property line and their house is how many feet?
From a couple hundred yard, I mean, it's, I couldn't, yeah, you could barely see, yeah. And it also goes, so it also tiers back up too. So, their, their house is probably 15, 20 feet higher in elevation. So, it, it's kind of strange how it was all there. I was talking, they stopped by yesterday. We were talking about their, Nate, I don't know if it's Rose that butts them in the back, but their little hill garden cuts off at their property. And then it drops off on the side of their driveway where it's all flat is all their property. But they'll never use it because they'd have to climb into the woods down a hill, which, you know, would have been more ideal if it was on our lot.
On the next lot, adjacent to yours, where, um, how does that, what's that land look like? Is it real uneven? Where, where would someone, is there a house on the next lot?
The 400-foot line, is that where you're referencing this?
I haven't been to the, to Lake Road or looked at your house. So, I'm just trying to understand. Is there a, a house on the next lot?
No, no. So, there's a, there's a.
Is the, is the land really uneven on that lot as well?
It's very uneven. I mean, you'd either be taking out a excessive amount of land or you'd be.
If someone were to build a house, could they build a house within 50 feet of your, of your lot line?
I would assume not. I mean.
Because it's very.
It's very, it's very, I mean, and it, it rounds off all the way around. So, you're kind of coming up to a mound in general. So, I mean, if you could chop that off, in essence, I guess you could. I mean, it's also a 1.2 acre lot. I don't know if.
I was gonna ask how big is the lot?
Yeah. And it's not on the lake either. And it's cornered between Ralph Road and Lake Road. So, there's really nowhere. And my property kind of, it's like a butcher cleaver almost. My handle, the handle of the cleaver is where the house is and it kind of comes out behind it.
There's no house on that lot right now?
No.
So, they're not putting something on top of an existing footprint? I mean, if anybody wanted to build one there anyway, you know?
Okay. The, the same owners of that property own a couple more acres next to it. And then there's another, they own a lot, I believe, on the lake as well.
Is that cloud? And the next house is on the lot?
No, it's the Cynthia Jones Trust. Sorry?
I, I, I don't know if you've seen this map, but lot 83, you're 84.
Yep.
The next lot where the house is is 83?
I, I don't know.
83 is where Lux is. Yeah, that's where the house is.
Where the house is, 83. He's 84.
84 is mine. 85 is the lot.
I'm sorry, 84 is you?
84 is me.
And you're about, and you're somewhere in the vicinity of that 85.
I'm pretty much directly adjacent to the 85, yes.
And there's nothing on the 85.
There's nothing on 85 or 87. I believe the owners of 85 and 87 are all in the trust with 89. There's no house up, I don't know if there's a house on 87, but 85 is the same owners as 87. But there's nothing there.
So, that, gee, do we know that for a fact if 87 and 85 is the same owner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's printed right here.
I'm sorry. Thank you. So, in theory, they couldn't build on 85 anyway because they don't have the road frontage? Or is this?
If it was grandfather.
It's grandfather.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, in essence, you've got 85, 87, 91 before you get to another residence. That would be Embly. What I'm trying to establish is if he put in this new addition, how would it affect the neighbor's house? If there were a house to be put on? 92.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if I may, the existing house that's already there is already closer than anything. Towards that lot is already closer than any, because it's kind of angled away from the property line. Like, the, the back corner of my house is closest to the property and it's angled away from their property. So, I'm coming out away from their property. I mean, it's a matter of feet. But I'm not infringing closer to the 85 lot. I am obviously going towards Lux's, but.
That's the 83 lot, the one you're describing you're angling away from?
Yeah. So, I'm kind of, yeah.
Okay. Wow, this is a very odd-shaped lot.
Yeah, when you're happy in 2020, you're excited by your first house and you see six acres. And then you get there, you're like, wow, that's, that's not as big where my house is as I thought.
It certainly looks like six acres is plenty on my house.
Earl Nichols in one owned a whole bunch of that land. And then when he died, he split it up amongst his kids. And some of them have been sold and sold and have, that's why they're all split up oddly like that.
So, 85, I believe, the summer of 2020 was sold to the trust. It looked like it was, it was two women, I think, that co-owned it.
Yeah.
I don't know. I looked into the tax. I think it sold for like $800. But I think it was like to the tr, I don't know, they're, they're part of the, it's a trust. So, I don't know who's part of it, but of course I would have loved to buy.
It would behoove you if you ever got the opportunity and could afford to, is to buy that 85 lot.
I would, I would love to. I would love to.
So, there's no zoning?
No.
No, but you've got the frontage, you've got the footage. There was no setback.
No, no, no. It's, it's funny. First of all, it's been there since before zoning.
Right.
And even though it wasn't occupied, it's a building.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Yeah. Oh, I'm a little confused about this. This is Article 4, Section A, mean?
Okay, so let's look at that. What?
And the same thing with the other application too. It's like, what are you referencing?
Okay. So.
I see another one. 37, 30. So, the existing house doesn't meet the setback requirements, right?
No.
What'd you say, Barbara? Did you see how it was? The existing house doesn't meet the setback requirements. And the addition kind of improves on it. I'm sorry, how much space between the back of your house and the end of your lot?
Back of my house and the end, like the, the absolute rear?
Yeah.
So.
More than 250 feet?
Oh, yeah. It's probably 1,200 feet.
Thank you. Do you know what the, the footage is on the back edge of your lot?
I just looked it up and I had a word to go along with it.
I don't mean to be a pain.
No, no, no. I just, I looked it up because I knew that question was gonna come up. The deed has a 245 feet.
So, if, if you've got your house sitting in the middle of that, he's, he's got the footage on the sides of that ladder.
This one? Article 4.
That's fine. It's what?
This one.
Your septic system, is it a pump-up system up into the septic field, sewage field?
No, no, no.
What, Pum-inalis?
Gravity.
Gravity. It's the other one? Oh, it goes downhill from behind the house, right? Yeah. It's gonna be much more expensive to go backwards?
Yeah. And also like just because you'd have to drive, I'd, I'd have to go.
You're all confused?
If we're gonna do any kind of dirt work or anything now, I'm avoiding, trying to go around my wellhead towards the Lux, the 83 lot. And now if I were to build on the other side, I'd have to cut down 85 trees. And it's also the edge of it too. So, it's kind of like if I could somehow get. And also it's a mystery of where the leach field actually lies too. So, if I wanted to drive all the way around and come back up.
I thought we were only talking about a special exception.
Yeah, we're only talking about, well, I understand.
I'd be going closer to the property line than I think.
So, uh, so when you put out, when you filled in this application?
Yeah.
Right? How come you have, you have both special exception and a variance?
I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. I was kind of, yeah.
He told us that the rest of it, he filled out something not being.
I mean, yeah, covering all my bases, I suppose. I don't know.
Okay, right. No, this would just be a special exception.
Okay.
You know, because there's, what you're asking for is simply you want to go less than 50 feet from the lot line, but it's more than, more than 25 feet.
Correct.
That's a special exception. Okay. Let's ignore the application here for a variance because it's not, you probably just filled that out by mistake. So, so this is, okay. So, anyway, so we're dealing with Article 5, Section 8A, um, which?
Do you have a plan or something? And what's the timeframe of this build?
It's kind of just been contingent on everything going on. I have, I have a barber shop, so I have a lot of friends and customers that are.
Oh, I wish you brought your stuff I need here.
I was honestly telling my wife, I go, if I could do a haircut while I was doing this, I'd probably be way less nervous because I'm used to just talking and working at the same time. But yeah, no, it's kind of contingent on every, it's kind of a friends and family deal as far as everything going on and obviously. Price of materials.
Let me tell you that our, the regular, you have to build it with a, you have to do whatever's granted here. You have to do it within two years.
Oh, no, it's, well, geez, yeah. My wife would kill me if it didn't happen within, much shorter than that. No, yeah. It was, it's definitely this summer.
Okay.
You know, contingent on everything.
Do you have a plan?
I have, again, it's kind of like basing off of material. Lumber has obviously gone down. I got kind of scared. I had Huckleberry out the other day and he was kind of freaking me out as far as concrete goes because I got a quote last year for everything. I got quotes for everything last year and everything's kind of gone from here to here. I'm gonna save 10 grand in lumber. I'm gonna spend 10 grand more in windows. I'm gonna spend 5 grand more in concrete. I don't know. So, a concrete plan.
Again, multiple bids.
Oh, and yeah, it's definitely.
It's a learning, isn't your house a learning experience?
Oh, yeah, everything, yeah.
But you do have a sketch?
Oh, no. I have everything laid out as far as.
Full plan.
Full plan going. So, I have a buddy that's also.
You have the funds in line?
Yeah. We, luckily with this economy, I was able to pull a line of credit after owning a home for 18 months. So.
I apologize. The reason why I ask is just driving here, I saw multiple properties in multiple amounts of completeness and people living in a camper and.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, he's in, he's in the existing house.
He's in the existing house. So, it'd behoove you to start this and get it done.
Oh, yes. And again, I mean, I don't have my partner here, but she is also. Not gonna let anything not be finished.
Right. It is, yeah. It's not. I apologize.
No.
Good point though. All right. So, does anybody have any more questions? Okay. So, let's hear from anybody else who wants to speak in his favor. Anybody?
I got one phone call today from the Embleys.
Yes, I, I saw, in fact, I saw Sally today.
Yeah, she says they didn't have any issues.
Right. Yes. I thought she was talking about.
She said what? I'm sorry.
Right. Yes.
I just had one comment. I think Guy's, Guy's question in regards to the property that's to the right of where Joe wants to build that small sliver of land. When you talk about 50 feet from that, that building, it goes down extremely rocky and fairly wet. So, if, if somebody were to put a house there, I don't think they'd be putting it anywhere near.
You're talking about, you're talking about lot 85?
Yeah, I, I believe so. Yeah. It's, it's very drop-off.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. It almost appears that lot 85 is almost unbuildable.
I mean, from talking to my friends and customers that are in the excavation world, it would be a significant amount of fill or removal in addition to the logging of the trees and finding which ends. It'd probably be better if they went down Ralph Road and came back up as opposed to coming from Lake Road. Just, it's very damp in the front of that property as well, the cold. It's everything, I mean, we're on the way to the lake. So, fills up somehow and it's half around my house. So.
I would think it'd be a perfect buy for a butter. Yeah.
Thank you.
In fact, it'd probably be a perfect buy if you bought two or three of them on.
Invincem to do it for what they sold it for the last time or bought it for.
All right. So, so if somebody else who wants to speak in his favor, anybody who wishes to speak in opposition. Okay? Then I will close the testimony and open it up to discussion by the board.
I don't see any problem because he's, he's gonna come. His house is up here. He's gonna go to the south of it. So, as long as he's got his side boundaries, um, he should be A-OK.
I, I don't see any problem at all.
I agree.
I don't either. As long as y'all get free haircuts for two years.
Hey, I don't get a free haircut in that.
Dude, I'm trying to let you.
Well, you don't need one, right?
You're thinking of getting a discount.
So.
Need lotion?
Well, I mean, is, anybody have any more? Guy?
I would just be curious what he's planning on putting there. Is it in?
Well, he just said the size of it.
It's 24 by 20, right?
Yeah, it's 24 by 24.
I'm assuming it's something gonna be, you know.
Living space?
Right. Living space. I have a mudroom.
You've got no intention of putting a garage there anywhere at some point?
I mean, not, financially, I can't see that happening anytime soon. I mean, maybe some, and it's really not even enough room. My biggest.
Well, that's what, that's what it's at.
To, towards 85, I don't have any further room. There's a, where, where that driveway kind of opens up right there, utility pole is right there. So, there's my other lovely part of this lot. And then on the 83 side, my well is on that side and would also be my only access to get anything to go to the backwoods. So, it's kind of like I would now be really cutting it close towards my neighbor's tree line. So, it's really not, I would love to be able to do that.
Well, I just have to live outside.
I just was talking about frontage. Well, if you did that, you know, afterwards, yeah. And that's why I said that.
Frontage?
If you took and put a garage in, is that gonna be too close to the lot line and stuff like that?
Yeah. No, I probably won't be doing.
He'll be back anyway.
Yeah. When I find more, when I win the Mega Millions.
Right.
Well, I'm, I only ask about a plan, a set of plans. I mean, if he were to do this again, it would behoove him to. I mean, he would be putting in a house of whores or Trump Tower there. How do we know?
Well, because all he's got is, all he's doing is.
Well, I, I know, but.
Twenty-four by twenty-four, you know?
If the neighbor would come in and he had a house of whore, Trump Towers there.
That's true, cause we're not telling, we're not saying how high you can go, right?
No, I know, I'm, I'm just making a comparison here, I just, is it gonna match or be in the liking of the other houses in the neighborhood? Is it gonna match the house that's there?
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna match the house that's there, the roof line's on.
Dad gonna make sure that's gonna happen?
It's a hotel.
Okay.
Can't imagine why you would not wanna do that, and that it's going to destroy your own property down.
Well, tell, tell them what your plan is, what.
It's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna, we're, you know, barring the fact of, um, money-wise, it's gonna be a, a, a living space with a mudroom and bedroom to give more area.
It's gonna have, uh, new windows?
Yeah.
What kinda siding?
Vinyl.
Vinyl? What color? Chartreuse?
Mass color ones, it's a bluish gray.
It's bluish gray, okay, what color is roofing?
Grayish black.
Awesome, done.
We're ready.
You're into the colors in Webster?
Yes.
I'm in pink with polka dot.
Yeah.
Spiral. All right.
It's good.
You wanna make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept this plan. Is that good enough?
I'll second it.
Okay, so, take the vote?
I will take the vote, Marty Bender.
I'm in favor.
Robert Drowan.
In favor.
Barbara Corliss is in favor, Jay Bo is absent, Dee Blake.
In favor.
And Guy LaRache.
In favor. Next time, bring your scissors.
All right, and, um, just, just hold your breath that nobody files in thirty days.
Yeah, like I said, like when Lexis came down, we talked the other day, and they're the only people that are near our house, so.
And we already rooted for one of your neighbors.
Yeah, so it was no problem. And, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good drive.
Thanks.
John?
Yes.
Did you graduate in fall third?
No.
Okay.
But I, I did go to Mary McValley.
What year did you graduate?
Seventy-nine.
Oh, you're a baby.
You're a.
Well, I have brothers and sisters too, so.
Cause Barbara and I graduated the first full year. Graduated in class.
Seventy-two?
Which was seventy-one.
Seventy-one, seventy-one.
So my sister Jill.
Jill, yeah.
Yeah.
She's married to Doug.
Married to Doug Agonos, yeah.
Jill Fornier.
Fornier. And my other sister married Joe, this is a history class for everybody, sorry. Married, uh, John Agonos, who was also a Bosman native.
Oh, yeah, Agonos is a story.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doug, he was in our class in school.
We're talking a half century ago here, guys.
Right now.
Memory is not as sharp as it used to be. I turned seventy the other day, and I go, wait a minute, when did last thirty years ago?
Yeah, right, exactly. Time flies, we're having fun.
All right.
I'm ready.
Okay, so.
So what are we going for on this one?
This is a variance.
Of seasonal camp.
What?
He's asking for seasonal camp.
Seasonal dwelling. And this doesn't match, this is my confusion. No, it's. Should we take attendance, or we don't need that?
Uh, yeah, we'll, I start the panel over again. Okay. All right.
Yeah.
So, um, okay, so, um, once again, this is a hearing before the, uh, Town of Webster, zoning order adjustment. And it is April eleventh, two, twenty-twenty-three, and we'll have the secretary take attendance.
Marty Bender.
Present.
Robert Drowan.
Present.
Barbara Corliss is here, Jay Bo, absent, Dee Blake.
Here.
Guy LaRache.
Here.
And Susan Roberts.
Okay, so, um, so first of all, why don't you come on up?
Oh, no, that's.
He's right there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We should also.
Yeah, should've seen you, right.
Come on, listen, Yellen.
Anyway, all right, so I'm sorry, you know, I, I don't know how to pronounce your name.
Ibram.
Okay, all right, um, and, um, let me tell you what our procedure is, okay? Once again, we will hear from you first, you tell us exactly what it is that you wanna do, um, and then we'll hear from anybody who wishes to speak in favor of your application. Then, of course, we hear from anybody who's opposed to it, a chance to rebuttal by you, then a chance to rebutting by them. We then close the hearing, um, I open it up to discussion by the board, usually we'll have our decision tonight. But if we don't, um, you'll, you'll hear about it. And, and then, again, if you don't like our decision, you have thirty days in which to ask for a rehearing, and and then once again, if we deny either one of you, either you or the opponent, uh, then you have, you have thirty days in which to file with the Superior Court. Okay, so, um, so I thought that you were here before a variance or us, and that you wanted to have a road put in. Is that right? Okay. So, um, I think, yeah, before I even hear from you with, with your plans, let me, let's, let me try and understand exactly what you want. So you say seasonal, seasonal dwelling, okay, and you have Article Four A to E?
A to E.
And there isn't any. So.
You, you're, you're requesting for a, um, special exception for Article Four A to E? We don't have an A to E in Article Four, so I'm trying to understand what it is you're asking for.
I don't know what's A to E.
It's on your application.
Yeah.
It was A dash E.
Yeah.
We don't have an E? Is that what you?
Well, we need to know what it is you're asking for.
Like, what I stood there, you know, when I built a small cabin, you know?
We need to cite the law. What part of the law are you asking for an exception to?
I don't understand. I'm put in application, but I'm asked, you know, but I'm told, you know, to put. I don't know what's missing, or, uh, I really don't.
Okay, so where did you get the idea that you needed to have a road to it? I, I'm, I'm looking, I mean, I remember seeing, um, a map, um, and your piece of property is right at the very end of this, right, like in a cul-de-sac, right? Okay.
A cul-de-sac that doesn't exist.
Right, well, it does exist on the, on the, the, uh, on the plan, right? Because the plan, if you remember, the plan was submitted, um, to the Registry of Deeds in nineteen sixty-eight, I think. I think that's what it is approved.
Yeah, that's mine.
Yeah, let me, let me look at that.
Help me with this, cause I remember reading somewhere that if the road was never constructed.
Yeah.
And the town never assumed maintenance.
Yeah.
Then it is considered abandoned, and it is appended to, annexed to the abutting property. So there is no, there is no road, there is no driveway.
Correct.
Am I wrong?
There's no road?
It's not a road.
Okay.
I built a road.
You built a road already?
Yeah.
Okay, so that must be what's shown here.
That's.
When did you, when did you do that?
When?
When?
Uh, two, three years ago.
Two, three years ago?
Yeah. It's not a hundred percent built, but I can drive with my car, my truck.
So there's nothing else built, no house or anything yet?
No, not yet, no, no.
Did you get approval from the town to build the road?
Yes.
Yes.
How wide is that road? How wide? I'll say fifty. I'm just thinking about fire protection and stuff like that.
No, 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 no. First of all, if, if he was going to, to put a residence there, though, it's, well, I think it makes any difference whether it's a, um, whether it's a seasonal dwelling or a full-time, right, I think it's still treated the same way, cause it's, it's a residence in which somebody would be living there, right? First of all, if, if he was going to, um, to get into it, um, first of all, it would, at, for now, it would only be a private road. Right, do you, do you all agree with me?
Yeah.
Yeah, private road, right, cause it's not a Class Six, because it's not owned by the town.
Yeah, no, it's.
Right, basically a private driveway.
Well, it, I don't think it makes any difference whether it's considered a driveway or a road, it's private.
Yeah.
You know, and, and a private, what?
This was, um, from the planning board from fifteen, um, clearing the property does not constitute select board permission to cut a road near a property or on anybody else's property for any purpose. So it certainly has the right to, you know, to get to the property.
Yeah.
But it doesn't call it a road or driveway or a.
I, see, go ahead.
I didn't think that we allowed private roads.
Well, there are plenty of private roads.
But also pre-existing.
Right, but this is also pre-existing, because this, this was created, this was created in nineteen sixty-nine, sixty-seven.
When they did Pillsbury Lake.
But the, but the road's not, you know, in that circle, it's not a, a town road, and it's.
It's not a town, no, it's not a town road, it's a private road, even though it's a private road which is undeveloped. I mean, it's, it's, there are other roads in Pillsbury Lake, which I believe are private roads. But, uh, but they're not town roads, in other words, the town, um, does not, does not maintain it, right? They don't plow it, they don't work on it, um, and when you have a private road, you, you know, supposedly you know that you have no, you may be, um, you may be there without, um, fire, fire truck or, or the ambulance, because you might be, uh, you're just gonna be, um, unavailable, because, and that's one of the, what you take when you build on a Class Six or a private road. That's, that's what you, and that, that was the Supreme Court, and in fact, there is, um, it's right in the statute. The statute which was amended, uh, within the last twenty years or so, I, let me look.
But, but we do not allow building on a Class Six road.
Well, that was our policy.
When did it change?
Yeah.
It's an interesting, uh, document from the town, the Board of Selectment here about the road. And it's not a private, it's a, circle is a private road, not a public road, so the town has no authority to grant permission for you to remove trees. The road is private and therefore not within jurisdiction of the town, as noted in the Senate certificate was recorded. And at the time, current owners of a house on Brookfield Circle, Schofield's, have been made aware of this, well, you may want to get speaking with them about the plans to access your property.
We'll, we'll hear from you later, okay? Don't worry.
Well, unless there's another driveway to this property, it's going over an existing driveway.
We have, we have the, uh, the map, don't we? I remember looking at the map.
You've got it there.
No, that, no, that's not the map I'm looking for, there was, um, there was, um, a map which shows, well, I guess this does, right? Cause this actually shows the, the Schofields, right?
Yeah.
But, um, and I guess I'm kinda jumping ahead, either.
Yeah, maybe jumping around, because it keeps saying it's a seasonal dwelling.
I don't think it makes any difference.
We can.
Well, does, does, is there any difference for a seasonal dwelling?
Well, the square footage can be lower.
What?
If it's for the zoning ordinance, the square footage can be lower.
Yeah.
But it can only be occupied for a certain period of time each year.
But that's not gonna make any difference here as to the access to it.
No.
Right?
I just didn't think he was asking for our permission about the access, I thought the town had made it.
Well.
Since when did we change on Class Six roads, that somebody could build on a Class Six road?
So, let me go with a little bit of the history. Way back in, probably.
Eighteen twenty-two.
No, I, no, not quite that old, but, but, um, this was the late, um, eighties. And nobody, nobody here was, was on the board at that time. There was, um, our policy then was, if you wanted to build, um, on a Class Six road, um, or private, I don't think I made a distinction then. I said, okay, fine, if you wanna build on a Classics road, you can do it, as long as, you know, you know that, that you're not going to, um, you won't get the fire.
Fire and police protection.
Right, or, or the ambulance, right? And so we had, um, we had a hearing scheduled, um, and it was a nice woman who showed up, and she said, you know, so they wanted to, they wanted to build on Gerish Road, uh, and this was coming into Dinget Circle.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And, um, and she, you know, and we all said, and, and I said to her, well, you know, you're not the owner of the lot yet, um, you haven't bought it yet, so we can't, we can't deal with you, we have to deal with the owner of the lot. And anyway, she was really nice, and we were just, you know, chatting, you know, and, you know, somebody asked, you know, sort of like, sort of like Guy who asks those clever questions, you know, and he said, um, you know, so how are you gonna get in and out of there, you know, in the winter, right? On that Gerish Road, you know? And she said, oh, we don't have any problem with that at all, because my husband drives a tractor trailer, and and that's only, you're, you mean, you're gonna be, and this is before Dinget's Corner had any stop signs either, right? And so that made us all, you know, whoa, that's, that's a little bit different now, you know? We see, you know, a guy with a tractor trailer coming in to this, you know, I mean, Dinget Circle has five roads that come, right? And so, so we said, so next time, you'll have to have the owner of the lot show up, right? And so then he came before us, and we said, uh-uh, we're not granting a building permit on, on a Class Six road. And so that changed our policy. However, then the Supreme Court, not in that case, though he actually tried that case, he, he filed it with the, uh, the Superior Court, and he lost. He was not able to, and so basically, that lot has remained unsold or whatever. So that was our policy, uh, no, no, no permits for, um, anything on a Class Six or a private road. That is until the Suprem, not only did the Supreme Court say, well, the Supreme Court actually said, really, it's kinda stupid to build in a Class Six or a private road, however, then you have to look at an amendment, and that was the one here, which.
Are you talking about the one you filed with the Registry of Deeds?
No, well, yes, that's, that's part of it, yes, you have to file, you have to file with. anytime that you build, um, or you're gonna reside on a class six or private road. However, let me see if it says exactly when it was. Let's see. When was the? I think it was in two thousand four, two thousand five.
It was a decision in two thousand and two?
It wasn't, this wasn't a decision, that was an amendment.
Yeah, no, this was, this was a judge, and they told us about it in one of the zoning classes we
Right.
took with this, that.
Right.
This judge made kind of a parenthetical comment about that deed restriction only applies to the person who signed it. It's not the people who visit. So if your, if your friends get hurt on the property and the fire truck can't respond, then they could sue us. And that's why we were not allowing permits on classic, that was my understanding.
Yeah, but I, my understanding is that basically, um, if you read, read the decision, not the decision, the statute.
Since, since I've been on the board, we had a lady that wanted to build on a Guided Board Hill Road.
I know.
And we told her no because it's a class six road.
Yes.
And that's within the last ten years.
No, it wasn't. It was more than that. It was more like about fifteen years ago, but it doesn't matter. It was after, it was after the, the statute was changed and, and I, I didn't, I made a mistake. Because I should have said that she was entitled to build.
Well, she also, she also was told that if she built, that she had to have a certain amount of, um, road, road width.
And.
And turn around for the fire truck.
We're a little off topic. Yeah, we, well, not really.
I've been reading through this quickly, um, seeing that this is.
What are you reading?
Well, all the meeting minutes from February eighteenth, twenty sixteen. It's talking about private roads, public roads, and this is a private road. But this gentleman needs an easement to be able to use it. Because it, because it belongs, it, what I'm, unless I'm reading it incorrectly, this belongs to another owner of the.
Well, that's what I was mentioning earlier that I'd read. Once it's been, um, not used, it belongs to the abutting property, so you don't need to.
Okay, so you're saying, you're saying that the road would have to have been abandoned or discontinued.
It was never I built.
But I don't think that, I, I guess my thought is that with, with you, when you ask to build your driveway.
We didn't, the Roy's were, um, there and they got a right of way from five eighty-seven, Deer Meadow before five eighty-seven was built on. So they got the right of way long before I came to the picture.
So when, do you know?
No, I, I think it was nineteen eighty-eight or eighty-nine. I believe that the house that we live in now was built and they got the right of way through. Five eighty-seven was not built yet.
Five eighty-seven would be?
That?
The one on Deer Meadow?
The corner of, of Brookfield Circle and Deer Meadow.
Down there, okay.
I'm gonna wait for my attorney. I'll wait.
I, I know we're totally, totally, this is, you know, not my usual process here, you know? But I know that, um, you know, Draco there really isn't gonna be able to tell us a lot of this. And so anyway, so let me, let me discuss with you what my thought is. I would think that this is not a, a discontinued or abandoned road. Because I think that in order to do that, um, and I guess I'm jumping ahead here because I really can't say exactly what you need to do.
I think there was a warrant article filed on it to abandon it from the town.
Really?
What was that?
Oh, that was during, um, what's his name was on the board then? Yeah, they had a whole.
A list of ones.
They had a whole list of them in Pillsbury Lake where they abandoned a bunch of them.
Where, and what? This was abandoned roads?
I would have to go back to the property file, go grab it real quick and see if it's in there.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah. Take a break.
Oh, eight to ten, somewhere in there? Marty, are we having an open discussion at all? Or do you want me to reframe still?
Yeah, yeah, let's, yeah, let's. Wait, wait till Russ comes back and then, you know? And then we will have, yeah, it'll be an open discussion. And and I don't know what we'll, we'll end up doing today. Well, I mean it. And I, I kind of wish that you had had a lawyer.
I had a lawyer before.
Yeah.
And I'll talk it again, you know? And I have to, you know?
I think maybe, maybe that, um, maybe that's what we should do is, is have a lawyer here for him so that we can hear at least, um, some presentation because he's not be able, he, he really can't make it himself. And, you know, because.
A lot, a lot of stuff has happened here, I mean.
I know, I know, I read it.
Going back.
Right, yes, I know, and.
If I could go all the way back to, we need to know what you're asking for.
Well, and I think that, again, that's a problem.
Well.
Yeah, because this doesn't, because this doesn't make, I, I know that his application, by the way, I, this is still being recorded, right, so.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. So, because I understand, yes, this, you know, Article Four, Section A through E doesn't make any sense.
Doesn't exist.
Right, right. And that's for a special exception and.
Well, is it, it's not a, it's a non-conforming law, number one, correct?
No, it isn't. Because that's conforming in Pillsbury Lake.
It was a pre-existing road, right?
Yeah. I mean, in Pillsbury Lake, you know, two and a half acres in Pillsbury Lake, that's giant.
It is.
Pillsbury Lake, yeah. You know, so this definitely, obviously, the whole problem is, is there a Brookfield, a Brookfield, what is it?
Circle.
Circle.
Circle, right, thank you.
Am I wrong in saying that even if it's a private road, it needs to be accessible?
Well, okay, so, so my thought.
For safety equipment to get?
No, 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 it has nothing to do with safety equipment. Because there's no way the town, at least for now, there's no way the town's gonna, going to accept it as a town road, right?
Well, he's, is he calling it a private road?
Yeah.
It's called a private road, does it have to be accessible by?
That's up to the planning board. So the planning board could simply say, okay, so, so, so the, the ZBA is saying, go ahead, under, once you meet the qualifications that the planning board has, because we don't, we don't make those qualifications, right? So the planning board can simply say, um, okay, so it has to be this quality, you know, before we'll let you build on it, right? And, you know, who knows? I mean, they, they might say, well.
Has he been through that hoop yet?
That? Well, I looked at the statute.
Yeah.
And, and first I was thinking, oh, it sounds familiar. He's gotta go with, well, a planning board first. But there is, there is something in here which says actually that the ZBA can go before. So, um, I mean, it's, you know, I mean, as you can see, I was looking, I was looking.
You can highlight it.
Yeah, right.
Whatever you had, just look everywhere, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, it's, it is confusing.
Yeah.
I thought that any private roads that were built had to be built to town's backs.
No, 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 not a private road. Because particularly since this private road was created in nineteen sixty-seven before zoning.
But the road ends at the circle.
Yeah, so.
So for him to go beyond that.
I mean, I'm going beyond it. All he's doing is, is he's, he wants to simply have an access from, um, you know, from Deer Meadow to his lot.
To a landlocked parson. That's effectively what it is.
Yeah, right. So he simply wants to, to build, um, a road. He's not asking a private road.
I have a road, excuse me, I have a road. I don't need a road. I just need a small building.
He's looking for a seasonal building. But you still have to have access.
I have access.
He built it already?
Yeah, I have access. But it wasn't done years ago, you know, in, in this town.
But the town wasn't doing, doesn't plow or anything.
But I do remember seeing it. I might have seen it in my travels.
Right, because it's a flower.
So it would take me time to go back and research it again.
So you're, you're saying that
Might exist.
that the town may have discontinued or abandoned.
Right, because I believe there were years, there were lists of roads in Pillsbury Lake where they went through them.
Tom Owens did that. I remember the warrant article. I remember sitting at Tom Owens' there when he was on the board. And I remember sitting here in this room during a town meeting where they went through all those roads and said, the town said, yes, let's take them off the books. But I don't know if Brookfield Circle was in.
But, well, right, first of all, we don't know, right? And, and also, the question is, is the town able to say, you know? I mean, this was, this was created in nineteen sixty-seven, right? Is the town able to say, okay, there is, and I don't know. Because the town may be able to simply say, okay, so there is no longer, it's basically Brookfield Circle is gone. It doesn't exist anymore.
It's a backlog, yeah?
I mean, so, no, what happens then, of course, is, is, um, you know, it's divided by the, the property lots, right? And, and so, you know, Lot, um, you know, one seventeen A B, right? His is simply, it actually gets a little bit larger, right? And it, but it's simply then, there is no, there is nothing he can do with it, except I suppose, you know.
I think you would still have an easement.
He would. You can't stop somebody from getting to their property, right?
No.
Yeah, but he can't, he can't drive.
Right.
And how does he?
This is a little over my head too, so.
I mean, there is some discussions about an easement in here and him having to get an easement.
Yeah, because they have an easement right there. It's not on Brookfield Circle. It's, it goes the other direction. So.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Marty, Brookfield Circle doesn't exist.
What?
Brookfield Circle doesn't exist. The, the, what you would drive by in C of what you would think is Brookfield Circle? No, 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 it's, it's all driveway. The actual, what would be on paper? The road?
Yeah.
Is twenty yards into the woods.
Yeah, right.
Twenty yards into it.
Yeah.
The road was never approved.
Well, it was never approved by the town, but.
But he was granted an, an, an access way because we can't deny anybody the ability to get to their property. I understood that. So he has.
Okay.
An access way.
So, so, okay, so if he has access, what does that mean? Can he simply walk to it or can he drive?
Well, he drives to it.
What?
He drives to it.
So he has, he has access.
Yeah, he drives to it.
Yeah. So the question is, you know, if he wants to build on there a seasonal, it doesn't matter whether it's seasonal or.
You're right, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. I'm with you on that. It doesn't matter what it is.
So, um, if he can, because he has an easement, then all, all that, that we could do is we could say, okay, and go to the planning board. And the planning board will say to you whether you need to have.
What easement would that be?
What?
What easement would that be from five eighty-seven? Um, Deer Meadow and sixteen Brookfield Circle? What easement? Because the.
It's actually my question, had, has anybody given, uh, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. Had given him an, an easement? That you have one, I know it's on record, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Does he have one?
May I, I, I don't know. I just wanna give you this all.
I'd like to see.
My approach. So there is some reference point for you. There has been some discussion in twenty sixteen.
And that's from his own attorney?
That's his attorney?
Yes. So Brook, Brookfield Circle, um, has been cleared? And he's not driving on your, your easement, your right of way?
No, he's, he's not, um, going on, um, I don't think he's touching. I, I, we'd have to come out. Well, that, that's one of my next questions with the hiring of, uh, Amston, Amston and Sons. Was there a survey done, um, where those pins are? Where it is, I can guess where the middle of the rock is where it veers off to the utility pole. I'm guessing that's, that, what appears to be, but if it's actually touching, if he's going on, I don't know, five eighty-seven. I know by the time he gets to the telephone pole, he's not touching me. He's not touching our property.
Not on the?
Not my property.
Not your driveway?
Not, no, not my driveway.
Okay.
Not my property.
Because it looks like when you start at Deer Meadow, it kind of veers off toward that, toward your lot.
Well, well, um.
Are you saying that he cut it in where Brookfield Circle is planted?
Yeah, where you look on that map
Yeah.
into what you would actually see there. My easement through five eighty-seven to my property veers off hard to the right, hard to the right. What? It's another question I have. His access way? I don't know where those pins are. And where he is actually in what would be Brookfield Circle. The road, not the circle yet, but just what would be the road.
Jeez, we have more questions than answers.
Well, I think when they did the Pillsbury Lake thing, people messed a lot of things up.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and we're still paying the price. How many more years?
Steenbeck.
They may.
I'll see the questions for us.
That was Steenbeck's?
Well, no, 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 actually.
I think it was somebody from Mass.
Right, it was Doctor Short. Doctor Short and I think he had other, he had somebody else. But it was Doctor Short who was the big investor.
Town country home.
But Steenbeck was behind it.
That, I can imagine that Steenbeck was probably putting, because remember, at the time, it was gonna be nothing more than summer cottages.
Yeah.
It was for a long time.
Right.
Marty, if I may just, I'm just trying to keep going on that.
Yeah.
With this, um, I, I don't believe any of the abutters has received compensation for the trees that were cut down. I know that I wasn't. Did Amston, Amston and Sun do a survey? And that, on the document, it says, quote, roughly identified? Are we saying roughly identified because there wasn't a survey to what? Trees roughly identified? That's what it has. Um, his, his attorney in that quotes the law that the abutters had the right up to the middle. His, his attorney in that quotes the law that the abutters had the right up to the middle of what would have been the road. He, his attorney, he addressed that the abutters had possession and that the compensation for those downed trees would come to the abutters.
Come to the owners.
For the, those downed trees to create that access point for him to get to his land. Nobody's denying him access to his land. I don't think anybody in the town ever has. He has, he has the right to his property. But I mean, I'm going back to this and I just want to put steps, I guess, in order. Again, the compensation in the middle of the road. And there, there's been no compensation received and
Okay.
what matters worse is that all those downed trees have been ambushed and everything else has been pushed to each side of the landowners, myself. I've got pictures of farm pictures on what property, that's on my property. And I can't, I don't have the means.
I'm not touching any property. I'm just in Brookfield Circle. But I want to say.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Years ago, you know, the guy, it was against me that I came here. But what happened? He attacked me a couple times, but his restraining order just expired and then because he can come in close to us. But what happened? I paid surveyor and my surveyor exactly showed me where is the pins. And I'm not so crazy that I go in any property, but he come to my property and attacked me. And then I go police in Webster and sue him and then he got the standing order, you know? Because he doesn't want to leave me alone, you know? And, but if he wanna survey, he can pay same like me. If he need lawyer, he can pay same lawyer like me, you know? But, but I did all that stuff because of him, you know? And I will do again, you know? But he can't stop me, you know?
Can we see the survey? What, I'd like to see the survey.
That was already in town.
I'm sorry.
All, all, was already in town, you know? That was all the schedule done in town.
Russ, do we have a survey?
That was done, you know? Done years ago, you know? I can do alone, not him, you know? I get from town, all up to, I get from my lawyer, from my surveyor, I do everything what they asking for me, you know? But I'm not here for the road. I'm just here for small building to build, you know?
But you need some access.
I have access.
But he said he has it already done.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that that has to be approved by the planning board.
That was, that was approved already.
I think, first of all, we have to figure out
Just not seeing the survey or seal.
this is simply an easement or is there still a private road? And I'd like to know whether or not the town said that that is no longer a road.
Well, I'd like to see that, but there's been several staffing board between the planning board in this package about, we have nothing to say about a private road. A driveway or private road, we, we don't, we don't have the authority to do anything about it.
Well, do you have paperwork that your surveyor gave you?
I don't have it me, but I have, no.
Because we have these plans, but it doesn't show, it shows P S and H post, but it doesn't show, there's no stamp on it from, from the surveyor. Do you have a plan the surveyors did?
He exactly measured that Brookfield Circle and I'm in that Brookfield Circle, so I'm not touching any property either, no. And I know where is the pins. I know where is the road, no.
The pins either side of the road, of your, your road, or just one side of the road?
That's not my road. That's for all of us road.
Well, yes, I, I agree, but I'm just using that term because we're talking to you. The, the right of way is this clearly marked with pins.
It's marked, yes. Yes, it's marked.
Do you have a, a piece of paper like this that the surveyors have stamped?
That's the paper, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not stamped by a surveyor?
No.
There's pins only on one side.
We have them?
I have stamped, you know?
You have stamped one that, you're not the original?
He signed that, of course.
So maybe that's just a copy, so that's why it's not.
Well, there's, there's some markings of pins, but.
Don't you want to see this one?
Plan of Stephen Hayes, Thomas F Moran, thirty eight, and then
That's the disagreement.
License two six nine. He's got pins supposedly in the circle. You have a pin here where at the ends of the arrows.
If I'm passing over that, no.
And then he supposedly has pins at the corner, the corners of his lots.
Is that the survey that Stephen Hayes paid for that he submitted? Because that, he's the.
Stephen Hayes, plan of Stephen Hayes.
That's who we purchased from. That's this guy. The Hayes is.
You, you purchased that property there?
From the Hayes'. I don't think any of those properties, including, there has been a surveyor that actually has surveyed it. I know that they, the, the company, there was, he did go up and see the pins. Whether they're still there or not, I don't know where they are myself to say whether they're there or not. To be perfectly honest with you, I think he's, that access way is further away from my side of the road and towards the De Petrios and Guymon side of the road. I don't think the pins are on that side, not my side. I think they're gone from the other side.
We need a surveyor to figure that one out.
I think my pins are all there. I do. I honestly believe my side pins are all there. It's not my side that's.
No, right.
It's the other side. I don't think the pins are there.
This is the, this is the people's property number one. It's kind of hard to read.
Says it lacks the property.
For French. Well, yeah, that's, that's a pretty interesting, because it's not on a road, right?
Yeah.
But that doesn't matter, not in Pillsbury Lake.
So.
Besides a private road.
So do, if I was trying to figure out which steps we need to take here, wouldn't it be to decide whether there is access and then
So.
the seasonal dwelling?
My thought is, first of all, is this simply, is this still a private road? That was created in nineteen sixty-seven by Pillsbury Lake. If so, then I think it still exists.
Okay.
If it doesn't, if, if in fact it was abandoned or discontinued by the town, then he still has an easement. But I think either which way, he still has the right to go before the planning board and say to the planning board, okay, I want to, I want to build a, either an easement or a private road to my lot. And, and then it's up to the planning board to say, okay, so you can build it, but here's our standard, right? In other words, it has to, you know, be able to hold.
A fire truck.
Well, no, it doesn't necessarily have to hold a fire truck because it's a private, it's a private road, right? So it doesn't have to meet the standard of being accessible to a private, a, a fire truck, a police car, an ambulance, right? Because one of the things, if he's going to build on it, then he has to submit, you know, the, the form which says, I know that I'm not holding the town to any liability, right? What you're saying is, yeah, but if he has a friend who has a heart attack, you know, and I don't know. I don't know whether that's what the case is. I know that that's what the Supreme Court said.
We'll, we'll have to talk about the case that they use as an example for that. It's in Loudon, of all places. But their, their house burned down and the people that were there were the ones that sued because they didn't have a response. They couldn't get them out there because.
Marty, could I ask a question? Can you go to that Barbara?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. What?
When we talk liability
Yeah.
and emergency response, be able, being able to facilitate that, whether that's police or fire, with whatever incident that may or may not be out there, if it's a fire or the worst case scenarios that we watch and hear on the news every week, it seems like. The liability, what, if the worst case scenario, there, there's a woods fire, a structure fire that now is out of control and no fire engine can get up there, but to my yard.
Yeah.
To, where's the liability? Who am I suing? Is everybody that, I mean, because this, now he was allowed, if, if potentially he was putting a structure there and is allowed to, if, if that's what is decided. But that structure burns down and now is in my woods and in my yard.
I was at a meeting last night up in Wilmington, this exact thing came up. If he's got a fire on his property and extends to other woodlands or other properties, he's liable.
Right, yeah. And this is simply
Makes sense.
Does the town have any liability? No. Right, because before he's going to, if he wants to build on the property, he needs to submit, I don't know exactly what it's called, but he submits something to the registry of deeds and it simply says in there, yes, I know that I cannot, I cannot sue the town, right? The town has no liability, you know? Obviously, there's, there's a problem for an insurance company. An insurance company might say, we're not going to, we're not going to. You know, but, but anyway, that's the whole thing for the town, right? The town, by letting somebody build on a class six or a private road, the town has no liability, right? At least, you know, again, would you say?
Who signed it, yeah?
Well, you know, I don't know. I would, I, that was one of the things the Supreme Court said.
That's why I was hoping you'd say that.
But the Supreme Court simply said.
Made a decision.
You know, that's why we think it's, it's, it doesn't make much sense to build on a class six or a private road. But now there's a statute which says you can. I mean, you know, and it goes right through. It tells you exactly what you have to do, you know? So, yeah, go ahead.
Quick question in fairness to all the abutters. Who does he need to satisfy to where this road actually is going, this right of way or access point is established and put in? I mean, he may be right down the middle bit, he may not be.
Well, that's, that's simply a question of surveying, right?
Well, yeah, but who's going to insist that, is it the planning board? Is it us? Is it, where does he start? I mean, I would think that'd be the first thing. Well, I mean, he could be right down the middle of it, but he, he could be on the wrong side of the pins.
And, and as far as I can see, that's, that's not the town's responsibility. The town doesn't, doesn't.
But don't we have a responsibility to the neighbors?
I, I think it's up to the neighbors to say, hey, I think that he's, he's cheating on, on his survey. Yeah, I don't know.
Actually, if it's a private road, it'd be a private issue, wouldn't it?
Right. I, I don't think the town has any say in, oh, let's see, let's, we, we as the town will say, okay, here's where the pins go, right?
Well, if the town's got no say, then we have no say whether he builds there or not, then.
Right, as long as, as long as we, as long as we're saying, yes, here's what you have to put there. You know, here's what your access needs to be. I'm saying that
But if he's way over here with his access.
As a zoning board, we're, I would say, you know, I, right, not for the rest of the board.
Yes, yes.
But I'm simply saying, I think that he has, he has access to his lot. And, and I don't know whether it's as an easement or if it is a private road. It's one or the other. Because I, I don't think, in other words, he's still, he has his lot and he has access to it, you know? Again, I'm, I'm saying, I don't know whether it is as an easement or if it is a private road, but I think, I think either which way he still has access. And I think that it is the planning board which now has to say, yes, he can access this road, but here's what he has to put there, right? In other words, it's not enough for him to just have a trail which he can walk, you know? If he wants to put a dwelling there, it has to have at least whatever the quality of the driveway, they say, which is something that we, we don't do.
Do those rules change in season?
Well, I don't know.
Do you want to throw subjects? There's no proof subjects, there's no two, right?
Right, yeah.
Well, I, I, I get all of that, but we're already getting hints that the road isn't in the correct spot.
Well, that's not the road. That's, that's simply there.
The access.
That's simply there, that's, that's the Schofield's driveway, right? Which is an, on an easement, right?
Yeah, I share, when five eighty-seven built, which I wasn't there, it was years after sixteen Brookfield Circle. The town forced them to put in an additional driveway, which you go by, there's a triangle, because the town said you cannot use the same driveway or entrance as Brookfield Circle. So they have to come in and around on their own property, which I don't mind. I plowed the whole thing for both my family and theirs. I plowed their area out and I plowed the whole stretch of their private driveway and my, and what, this section of Brookfield Circle is not as long as these chairs lined up. It's, it's not even, Brookfield Circle is shorter than this distance right here.
You're talking about the, the Brookfield Circle as it overlays your driveway, correct?
Where you are entering Brookfield Circle with that entrance right there is.
What I'm looking at is how your driveway is a very small piece of Brookfield Circle.
Yeah, that entrance right there is right here, and by the time you get to that table, on paper, that's taking off that way.
Then you're on, you're on the driveway.
The driveway is actually what you see, and when you drive them by on Deer Meadow, it looks like a straight shot. It, it really is a straight shot. But on paper, that Brookfield Circle should be heading straight up to the left. Right out to the left.
That's what I thought I was looking at.
So the surveyors messed up? Is that what you're trying to say?
Oh, no. I think that the, the Roy's, what, I can't, Hayes', Stephen Hayes. You know, similar situation, I think getting the easement from the owners of five eighty-seven at that time, he probably took the path of least resistance and it just happened to be a fairly straight line. Because if you look at the terrain, like the other gentlemen were talking about, the terrain, the rocks, it was probably the path of least resistance. And it ended up being a pretty straight shot.
Well, I know that up at the lake, they had a lot of problems, Pillsbury Lake, there was a lot of changes and because I have friends that live up there too, and it would, the line would be changing all the time. So their next surveyor comes in, they say, oh, no, that's not yours.
So I'm not a physician to be able to look.
What do we recommend to this gentleman tonight?
I would say the best thing is for us to, what am I trying to say? How to, basically, let's continue this case. I would hope that he would get a lawyer to come back here in a month. And hear from a lawyer, tell us what he wants to do as far as a survey. Or does he have some other ideas? But I, I'm still, I still believe that Rocco here has the right to.
I do, I do as well, but it, it needs to be an, an access that's not encroaching on the neighbors.
Right, right. No, because again, I don't. Right, right, no, because, again, I don't know whether it's a private road which still exists there or if it's a, an easement. I think there might be some difference, but either which way, I believe he's got access to it.
Marty, if I can ask, the research that the board of the town might be able to, that there was a question earlier about identifying what might be the abandoned roads, would that be downstairs somewhere?
We'll set Russ on that one.
Yeah, Russell, Russell'll see.
Russell'll figure that one out.
So by the time we were readjusted in a month from now, we would have the answer.
I would think so.
Before the, the question was, is it still existing?
And hopefully, he'll have an attorney here in a month, you know? And I, you know, and I don't know whether you still have Eaton Tarbell, you know? He still happens as your lawyer?
Yes, I'm not.
I mean, I know him slightly.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, he'd be fine.
Well, could I also ask that we get this straight? I'm sorry, I know I'm being a stickler.
That's another thing, yes.
You've got to cite the correct chapter and verse you're asking us for. And this is not it.
This gentleman gave me that. And I put all that information to him, and he said it's okay.
So he's blaming you, Russ?
No, I'm not blaming nobody, but I gave information about that.
I mean, I'm assuming Russ didn't tell him Article four, A through E, right?
Well, I think he said he came in for a seasonal camp. That was the original request.
Okay.
But I just can't find the correct zoning code from this.
I didn't write that on there, but I did notice it in the hearing notice.
That's got to be clear, because we can't approve something that we, you can later come back and say, it wasn't what I asked for. It's got to be correct. Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna talk to an attorney, then have them.
And we could, yes, 'cause we can simply, we can simply amend this.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So we'll get a new notification for the.
So because where we, they're gonna schedule it for the next hearing, there's not gonna be another notification. You've got the notification.
Okay.
Which says that we continue, it'll be at the next hearing, which will be the same.
Whatever, the, the, the second Tuesday of the month.
Second Tuesday of the month, okay.
And the posting will stay up until it's done.
Okay.
So this meeting was only for the, the road access? I thought it was for the dwelling. I'm a bit confused. I was curious on when he was planning to build there. That's what I'm asking.
Right. I think.
You have a plan for the building?
Yeah, it was going in a drop and a drop.
Just the footprint?
Yeah, thirty-two by what?
Twenty-four by twenty.
Twenty-four by twenty. So that's four hundred and eighty square feet, right? Three sixty-six, it says here, twenty-four by twenty.
It looks like he's got a cutout for a deck not considered.
Is that a deck?
Litting? There should be deck.
Yeah, so it's.
There we are. So it is three sixty-six square feet.
Square feet, you're saying.
So I have to double check.
Says three hundred and sixty cent square feet.
Yeah, smart.
What was that?
Like for the company.
Eight hundred square feet for a full-time residence.
Something for the slip, yeah, couple nights, you know, and not, not considered, you know? I'm not building house, you know? I'm not building hotel or something, you know, a little small kind of, you know?
These tend to turn into houses when you get wells and septic and everything in them, so.
Seasonal dwellings, any dwelling that consists of less than eight hundred square feet may be considered.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's why this is a seasonal dwelling. But he still has the problem of access to it.
Correct.
Which is what we're, we're gonna continue till, till the second Tuesday of May.
I can get the date for that.
Should we, should we have the planning board come in at the same time with us? I'm gonna have.
We could.
That could be a quicker way for him.
Yeah.
Have the both together, meet together?
We could.
Good.
And then they, so they could say.
Face two at the same time. You'll face two instead of having two different meetings.
Maybe somebody pick up on something that we missed?
I think that's the ninth. I'm making sure of the date. I don't know what's posted, make sure there's no holiday, I don't think so.
What exact, what is the date of the second Tuesday next month?
I'm forgetting for you.
You said the ninth.
I think it's the ninth. I'll double check apparently.
Why don't we?
Yes, it would be May ninth.
May ninth for the ZBA?
May ninth at seven would be the next date.
When's the planning board?
Planning board is next week.
Next week.
Why don't you ask the planning board, when you, when they have the hearing, ask them if they would be willing to show up on May ninth? Or maybe we can, if, if we find some other date which, in which they can both, they can meet us.
Well, if we weren't gonna meet on the ninth, they would have to send out new notices.
Oh, okay.
'Cause we'd have to announce it now if we were doing it on a different day.
Okay, so see if we can get them to, to come.
I think it's critical that we find out what this access is.
Yeah.
If it's indeed down the Brookfield Circle.
It's a.
Opposed Brookfield Circle, so it's not encroaching on any other lot.
It's hard to make a decision without knowing all the facts.
Yeah, I'm feeling like we're missing some big key pieces.
It would be great, you guys, anybody wants to come over, you know? A few brownies or whatever.
We don't want anybody running down your driveway unnecessarily, so.
Feel free, drive up.
You gotta turn around.
You gotta gator?
What's that?
You gotta gator?
A gator? Like, don't.
I can't walk that far.
I'm coming, just give me a call, I'll come down and pick you up at the street, drive you up.
Well, I can drive you out.
All right, well, drive up and turn around and take a look, see.
Drive into the woods or something, I can't.
Well, I'm concerned for the neighbors, true, but I, I keep thinking that if this is, unless it's been abandoned or vacated, whatever it is, if you can find that information for us.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and find out.
Yeah.
First of all, first of all, let's find out whether or not this still is a private road.
But even if it is, it's a private transaction, it's not a public transaction, it wouldn't be our decision. But then we go back to seasonal dwelling.
Yeah, for, and I don't, I, yeah, the seasonal dwelling, I, well, for now, I would say, we don't have much trouble with, you know.
No, we don't.
It's, it's the access.
It's the access. As long as it doesn't interfere with the neighbors.
Right, well, and again, the question is, you know, if this is still a private road, then.
Then that's, that's his access.
Right, yeah, right. And it's simply a question of, okay, you've got to upgrade the private road to whatever the planning board says.
Unless it's considered a driveway, correct?
No, it's, it's not a driveway. You mean, you mean the existing? Oh, are you saying that?
Whatever he builds to get to that lot could be considered a driveway, not a road at all. He doesn't have to build at town standards, just access. But the part that gets me is crossing over other people's lots.
But he's not going.
Yet if Brookfield is not vacated.
Well, and even if it is, even if, even if Brookfield has been abandoned or discontinued, I think, then he has a right of easement, which still gets him.
Yeah, I agree that, but I want him on that.
Right, right.
Brookfield access.
Right, right.
Not in the neighbor's yard.
Right.
Sorry to be.
And I, and I think that he had the right to, you know, to clear.
I agree.
Wouldn't he still need permission from the abutting owners to cross that, though?
I, I don't think so.
If it's not vacated, I'm sorry.
Well, first of all, if it is still, if it's still a private road, it was never abandoned by.
The town.
And I don't even know if the town can abandon a road like, I don't, I don't know. But even so, if it, if it is a private road, then it's simply, yeah, these people, well, it had nothing to do with the neighbors, right? Because it's not your trees, right, on the private road. Well, I guess it belongs to, to all the, all the neighbors.
Would that be where his attorney, I already identified that, Marty, is that the trees, the compensations for the downed trees? Because nobody was able to stop the accessway, because he needed to have access to his property. What was identified in his attorney's letter was the compensation up to the middle of what would have been to the butters on, abutters on each side. And that's never, that's never, it's never come to fruition.
Yeah.
Or had been identified. So that's never, so his attorney identified what would be perhaps an abandoned or off-the-map road that is no longer acknowledged, so that the abutters are already identified by his attorney.
Okay, so, so think about this, okay? Let's forget about your driveway in this, right?
Yeah.
But we're, so we're building a private road, right? Like it's shown in the map.
Yeah, okay.
And there's trees in there. So what happens when the trees get cut down? Because they can be, this is my theory, anyway, right? That, you know, that somebody coming through there can, you know, 'cause he wants to use his, not everybody's private road, right? Because there are what, there are.
Multitude of lots on either side.
Yeah, right, right, okay. So then I would, I would say, sure, so he cuts down, I don't know, you know, a dozen trees, right, to get that access, right? Then I would say, yeah, okay, so he's cut down a dozen trees and he simply, he simply divides, you know, the, the value of the trees that were just, that he just cut down. And, you know, it's divided up by the number of, of lots.
I'm, I'm fine with that formula. If that was, to all that was taken down, I'll take one-fourth.
Yeah, whatever, right, whatever.
I'll take one-fourth of whatever that sum is. I don't know how we get to that sum.
Yeah, right, yeah. I mean, or you could just simply say, here, I'll give every, each of you will get, you know, two trees.
Wasn't there a logging permit to take down those trees? And they'd have to, no?
Nope. 'Cause I don't think it's logging, they just were clearing off trees.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. Okay. I was thinking that.
Something like that.
Yeah. We'll tell you how many trees.
But I thought, when I clean, I left.
All right.
Okay, so we'll see you guys.
Thank you so much, guys.
I'm not taking any cheats.
Oh, you didn't take any?
I just left, but nobody took it.
'Cause they're afraid that we, somebody should blame probably.
Okay, so this hearing is continued.
So you're gonna continue your hearing to the next meeting?
We'll see if we can get more information.
Excuse me, I like to know answer, you know, if you can give me answer, yes or no, doesn't matter, you know, you know?
Well.
Or if you cannot tonight, just send me.
No, 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 I'm telling you, I'm telling you to get a lawyer, you know? Eaton Tarbell would be fine, you know, or another lawyer, doesn't really matter. But try to have a lawyer here in a month.
I'm not sure for that, you know?
Okay.
I'm not sure if I go before, you know, but.
It would be much, it would be really helpful if you had a lawyer here, okay? So, and, 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 yeah, if you find, well, I don't know.
Survey document that's stamped.
What?
Any survey document that's stamped by a surveyor.
Yeah, but I paid, I know where is that. And if somebody doesn't know, like, like him, you know, he can pay surveyor, and he will exactly know, but I'm hundred percent sure that I never go in any property other than in Brookfield Circle, you know, because I, I paid that surveyor, you know? Because of that, before town, this town approved me to clear my road, this Brookfield Circle. This is, you need to have surveyor, you know, and lawyer, and I did that.
So, okay, so where is the lawyer?
I, I was that time, that time I had that, you know?
Can you, can you give us the name of the lawyer?
That Eaton.
No, no, Eaton's, Eaton is the, is the, I'm sorry, not the lawyer, I wanted the surveyor.
That Amston, Amston.
Okay.
Hank, Hank Amston.
All right, let's see if we can.
But you said you have.
If we have it here, if we have.
But yeah, it's pinned, if you, if you go in Brookfield Circle, you can see.
Maybe ask Teresa if she knows where it was.
But they are put it right, one time. I keep just a.
If you can't find one of them, by then, let's just get in touch with this Amston.
Amston.
He, he will not answer, he will not answer. I don't know if he's still alive or, I'm not talking to him.
But this man says, Marty, he says he has a surveyor's thing with a stamp on it. Don't you say that yet, a surveyor's?
Yeah, he signed that paper.
With the stamp on it.
Yeah, so I'd like, yes.
So you can show us that.
But I wanna say, if somebody think I'm in other property lot, they can sue me, and there we go, end of story. You know, I pay all that fees, you know, all damage what I did, and I'm here, I'm not escaped, you know? But I know exactly I'm in Brookfield Circle, you know? But that's not, nothing about that, it's about that small, you know, that cabin.
But you're gonna put a, a house on that property.
Small cabin.
It's gotta be eight hundred square feet, though, I think.
Last thing, does it season well?
Three hundred and sixty.
Oh, that's right, that's right, Hillsbury Lake's different, yeah.
Three hundred and sixty feet square.
So does he still have to bring an attorney and everything next time?
I would hope that he has.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So if I not bring, what happen now?
What? If you can't get a lawyer, then just come, you know, come on, on May ninth.
Bring your paperwork.
Right.
So I cannot done build if I cannot get attorney.
I'm sorry, say that again.
That's mean, I cannot build if I don't get attorney.
Yeah, no, not until we approve it, no?
Right, I mean, so, again, you know, we're just going to hold this case open until, from May ninth.
But my question is, this street here, Mount Vernon.
Mount Vernon?
Yeah. How that, that's, that's supposed to be same, some, like Brookfield Circle, how that get town road, you know? That, that.
I don't know, Mount Vernon, yeah.
That's same like this, it's built same, same year, same.
Yeah, right.
You know?
It's, it's built to certain specifications, so the town accepted it.
Well, that one's only half.
Is Mount Vernon accepted?
I think.
Yeah.
No, only one portion of it is, not the whole.
Yeah, not the whole thing.
Not the whole thing.
So where's, where do they stop the acceptance of Mount Vernon? There's a whole bunch of houses on there.
I, I would have to go back to the map, probably last notice.
Again, you know, we'd like to know.
Go down road, Brookfield Circle.
Private road?
It's not a town road.
If we look at the minutes, leaving one of the same discussion that happened right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
This has been the crux of this problem, when they determined it was a private road.
But we, but we don't understand.
I, I, when Tom Holland presented all those in the town meeting, it was because we were having trouble with saying, these are the ones that the town's gonna maintain.
But they have, the town has to accept the road, I think.
So we won't have it.
They have to be up to a standard, yeah, they have to be up to a certain standard before the town can accept.
Planning has been recorded. And I, prior to planning boards.
So much, so much. There was something that had been, if it had never been maintained by the town for something like a decade or two.
It's still there. It could be dirt, but it has to be.
It's a front. Yeah, I think eighteen feet.
I don't know. You gotta have that.
But this is more than eighteen feet.
Even if it's, even if it's discontinued or abandoned, yeah, what happens then is, yes, it goes to each on the other side of the road. You know, like, like.
I, I'm hearing you, but all these lots don't have access.
That's okay, I don't, I don't be happy anyway, you know?
Well, you want to build a house.
I have house.
This, this is all.
This is just recreation.
Yeah, can we just kind of close all the meeting minutes for next time?
So can we shut off the recorder?
So make a minute, second? Is that getting approved?
You see this?
Oh, you agree?
What I have.
A juror?
Yeah.
Yes, a juror, yes.
Okay, coordinate here. Mount Vernon, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Meadow.
All right, so now, now.
This is God, it's a small place, like. Called.
Oh, that place, so we're going up.